The button should not be blinking. Can you hear us now?
They're on a different.
Oh, it's working. It's working?
Okay.
Great. Okay.
Shall we repeat everything?
Wait, do a Facebook post or something. Seriously.
Yes. Katie?
Sorry, Randy.
Budget team, they opened the budget.
And like events are in full swing, we've had varsity competitions, and continuing this week. We had a scrimmage, a boys scrimmage today, and a girls scrimmage, soccer scrimmage, this past Saturday. The field's looking great, the courts, you know, besides the high school facilities looking great. They did a great job, you know, working on some of the projects this year to get our facilities prepared.
Mr. Tubman?
Well, I'm pretty fresh with this, so please bear with me. Today was day seven. But generally speaking, so far, the primary concern has been the rest of the safety concerns. Overall, look at the property and facilities. So, we did a lot of tree trimming, mulching, we set her on the outside, pressure washing, like, there were multiple lingering life-threatening issues from other members, maybe last week, maybe this week. We got a lot of tickets split up from staff, and we had a lot more to do for the next six months.
Just to add on to-
Can I ask about keys, though?
Just to add on, our faculty and staff were back yesterday for the beginning of the year, our first in-service of the school year. I don't want to speak for everyone, but the energy felt very positive. Everyone, both buildings were just abuzz, people ready to be back and excited for the school year to come. In addition to just the updates from the administrative team, I do want to just alert the public that we do have a new traffic pattern in the parking lot. Officer Reeves was very helpful with that, and feedback was that it was safer to keep direction, or the traffic flowing directly to the right, so that we're not crossing traffic. That information is posted on the district website, as well as the Facebook page. There is a map, a visual that goes along with that. So that is, that is a big change impacting our traffic pattern, but seems to be going well so far. We finish our in-service tomorrow. Today was a clerical day for teachers in their classrooms, setting up, getting ready. We have our final in-service before the school year starts tomorrow, and we welcome our students back on Thursday. So we're excited to have, have our halls filled again. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So we've been busy with contractors, and we had our annual contractor meeting earlier this month. It went really well, meeting everybody, making those connections, so we're ready for day one. The phone calls have been placed and made to the students for pickup and drop-off times. We had some things to address for food services as well before day one begins for students, but we're in good working order there, so all is well in both of those, those areas.
Here you go. Okay, thank you guys for the updates. We will move on. Is there any public input at this time that we're aware of?
That's what we can see.
Just for the record, we did hold an executive session prior to the meeting for personnel matters. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to finance.
A, the finance committee recommends approval of the following check registers in the June budget summary. A total of one million seventy-four thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Does this include the cyber school?
No, cyber school is taken care of this month, so it's not separated out because it's not included.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
B, the finance committee recommends approval to continue the employee assistance program for the 2025-2026 school year with the ESI Employee Assistance Group. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
C, the finance committee recommends adjusting the ala carte prices on the following menu items for the 2025-2026. Salad entree, sparkling ice, iced tea, chips, ice cream, and the heater knife. What increases does this represent?
So if you look in your packet for the work, there are increases of about twenty-five to fifty cents. For the salad entree, the old price was two dollars and twenty-five cents. The new price is showing two seventy-five. Sparkling ice was two twenty-five, now asking for two fifty. Iced tea was a dollar eighty, the new price is two dollars. Chips were priced at a dollar, they're asking for a dollar twenty-five. Ice cream at a dollar twenty-five, they're now asking for a dollar fifty. And the character ice cream was at two fifty, and they're asking for two seventy-five. There's a couple errors there.
Represented just because of the inflation?
Yes.
They asked someone?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
B, information Henry Dunn has provided an updated bond application for the Assistant Board Secretary. And that's it for finance. All right.
Okay, athletics and extracurricular. A, the athletics and extracurricular committee recommends the approval of Justin Cotton as a junior high girls wrestling assistant coach for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Wossey?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Nace?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
B, the athletics-
Motion carried.
Thanks, I'm sorry, jump ahead. B, the athletics and extracurricular committee recommends the approval of Taylor Baldwin as the varsity girls' basketball head coach for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Wossey?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Nace?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Nine yeses, motion passed.
Okay, C, the athletics and extracurricular committee recommends the approval of Wendy Darty as the varsity basketball cheerleading coach for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Wossey?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Nace?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Nine yeses, motion passed.
D, the athletics and extracurricular committee recommends approving the addition of the Special Olympics PA Unified Champion Sports USC Program as outlined in the MOU Memorandum of Understanding. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, the next one, two, three, four, five are disinformational, so I'll read them through and then ask if anybody has any questions. E is information Dave McCorkle representing the Eaglesmere Tennis Center at the Crestmont Inn donated five bags of lime to chop. F, information, the Sullivan County High School golf team received a donation in the amount of two thousand eighty-nine dollars from the Eaglesmere Country Club Ladies Golf Group. The money was raised during the annual ladies invitational tournament and will be donated to the Booster Club for the golf team. G, Tim Higley and County Line Property Works donated a load of mulch to be used on the cross-country course. H, Dan Morrison and the La Porte Volunteer Fire Department donated thyme and watered the soccer field.
Aye.
Scott?
Yep.
I think the I needs to be, it's not informational, because it's received by the district. Because it's the activities, I'm sorry.
Which one, the H?
The I.
The I. Okay. Okay. Does the five bags of lime then need to be approved too?
I would say yes.
Okay, let's go back and, uh-
I don't know what the cost of that is, it's the amount of lime.
I don't know what it is either, so let's just vote.
I don't, I don't agree.
All right, thanks, Lynn. So we're gonna go back and vote on E and I separately. Number E, Dave McCorkle representing Gilmore Tennis Club at the Crestmont Inn donated five bags of lime, and I so move to accept.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
And an I, the Sullivan County High School class of 2027 received a donation of three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-nine cents from the parents of the class of 2027, received from fundraising stands at the Dairy Parade, La Porte Carnival, and the Dushar Founder's Day. And I so move to accept.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Any other questions on athletics and extracurricular? Anything we missed? Okay, thank you. Next, over to you, Joe.
Okay, buildings and grounds. The information, though, we have already been overshot all three of that. B, the buildings and grounds committee recommends approval of the facility use agreement, pet addendum to facility use agreement, and pre-survey form with the American Red Cross to use the facility to provide services during a disaster. The agreement only applies when the Red Cross requests use of the facility and is managing the activity of the facility.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Upon your approval this evening, Matt and I will be meeting with the Red Cross within the next week or so. We're kicking some dates back and forth for the building tour and to have them take a look at our facilities in more detail. So thank you for that.
There's one other thing with buildings and grounds. Mr. Tubman, they, uh, Booster Club had trouble getting into the closet where they keep their candy, and a key couldn't be found. Could you help us out with that?
Yes.
And then also where the freezer is too, they need to be able to get in there too.
Okay.
Know your new address, but someone on your team should know about it.
When we were in there the other day, we were like, so-
I can't remember if you get in that closet, but they want to.
But the candy's the most important, they need to be able to get the candy out for the event twenty-second. Is that?
Where is the candy?
It's in one of the closets in the new edition.
I think that's the only one that's locked, so it's probably in that same one.
We have keys available.
All right, well, they were, they told me you didn't, couldn't get in with the-
No, I have a spare set of keys, so the coaches use with the weight room. And originally, the weight room and that closet key were the same key, but they're no longer the same key. So the weight key doesn't work, but I just-
Okay, then that's it for buildings and grounds.
Curriculum and student activities, I'd like to make a motion to take items A and B together.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, before I read C, it says a hundred dollars per course. I think it's now a hundred dollars per student?
Yeah.
No, it's- All right. The curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of summer school attendance for high school students to be in-person and pay a fee of one hundred dollars per student to begin the summer of 2026. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item D, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of the 2025-2026 Sullivan County High School Griffin Student Handbook. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Item E, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of the 2025-2026 Sullivan County Elementary School Griffin Student Handbook. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions on any? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
No questions, just want to say thank you. I think, you know, we asked for some more documentation on the summer school and then had some discussion about some handbook items, so thank you for the engagement over the course of the past week to get those together. Appreciate it. Item F, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval to accept students living within the Toncanic Area School District to attend the Sullivan County School District on a tuition basis for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
That is all for curriculum and student activities.
Thank you. Personnel?
A, the personnel committee recommends assigning Samantha Kayla to serve as a mentor for the elementary principal Stacy Strabilla for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
B, the personnel committee recommends assigning Laura Feaser to serve as a mentor for the new high school guidance counselor Sydney Dozer for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
C, the personnel committee makes a recommendation to hire Allison Holcomb for the- Sorry. Allison Holcomb for the vacant K through twelve intinerant emotional support position to begin on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at master step one with zero credits with a salary of seventy-six thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Personnel committee recommends assigning Brian Heisman as a mentor teacher for Allison Holcomb for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
E, the personnel committee recommends assigning Carrie Devlin as a mentor teacher for Emma Byler for the 2025-2026 school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
F, the administration recommends hiring Teresa Pardo as administrative assistant to the business manager at an annual salary of fifty thousand eight hundred dollars to begin on September third, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second, and I do apologize, we didn't do a roll call on C, but like I said, with the hiring, if there was a nay, we would reverse it, do a roll call, but for the hiring of F, roll call, please.
Wossey?
Yes.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Nace?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes, but I need to make a comma.
Okay.
She's being hired tonight. She was already told she's hired, she already put in her, her notice that she's leaving. You've got, you could put her in a predicament by doing that, please don't do that going forward. But we should move forward and hire her.
Is the problem the start date?
No, she's already, she's already told her employer she's, she's leaving, she's got another job.
Well, she's offered the position, so whether she tells her employer, that's up to her.
But it doesn't happen till we vote here.
Yeah, that's not-
Yeah, but she should be told that-
She should not say, or it's not final until it's approved. Like, that's typically what we do.
That's-
Because they have to-
September third is two weeks from-
Yes. I mean, if she wants to tell her employer, she can tell her employer, that's on her.
Yes.
But she's technically not approved until-
Have we told her that she's not approved till we vote on this?
I assume so, since it's two weeks from today, it's her start day.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Nolan?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Nine yeses, motion passed. G, information, the following teacher has met the requirements determined by the Pennsylvania Department of Education to grant him tenure, Daniel Kinsey. And that's all for personnel.
Policy and procedure? Policy and procedure, I mean, the policy and procedure committee recommends approval of the following policy for the first year. Policy two forty-nine bullying and cyberbullying. And I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That was all for policy and procedure. Okay, um, one item for transportation. Transportation committee recommends Frank Rotinsky as a substitute bus driver for the 2025-2026 school year, with Alan McDonald as the contractor for oversight. An I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two informational, annual bus inspections were completed on July seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the annual contractors meeting was hosted on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. And that is it for transportation. All right, we'll move on to board reports. Want to be anything?
Uh, nothing to add, uh, listen to me.
Eric?
Nothing to add, just, uh, you know, looking forward to the twenty-five-2026 school year.
Amanda?
Nope, nothing to add.
Joe?
Uh, we are, we have a finance committee, uh, meeting on September second at four o'clock. And that's it.
Shelley?
Uh, just looking forward to the school year. Welcome all the new faces around here. There's a one.
Jan?
I'm also looking forward to the school year.
I'm also looking forward to the school year. And that's it.
Mary Elise?
Yeah, just best of luck to all faculty, staff, teachers, kids, everybody starting on Thursday.
Scott?
Yeah, just wanted to welcome all the, all the new hires, ones we had tonight over the last month. You know, looking forward to everybody joining, working as a team here. Thanks for the facilities team, getting the building ready, the grounds ready. Great job. And I want to thank everybody that's donated on the list here tonight. Dave McCorkle, Eaglesmere Country Club Ladies Golf Group, Tim Higley, County Line Property Works, Dan Morrison, La Porte Volunteer Fire Department, and the parents of the class of 2027. Thank you all so much. Administration, looking forward to a great year, thanks for being ready to go and good luck.
Awesome, thanks. Yeah, welcome everybody. And I just wanted, we were over at the school one night goofing off from baseballs around the field. I just want to say, like, actually, the, the grounds does look pretty good. And actually, with a little bit of work, we could possibly have one of the nicest baseball fields around. It's, it really, it really came around, it looks good. And congrats to all the new hires. Orientation must be pretty good. New hire orientation, there's like a lineup down the hall.
Yes. That's a good thing, one of the good things.
Cool. If we, let me see, I don't think, if there's no other items or there's not any public input that we're aware of, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.
Maybe there's something after, though?
Yeah.
Yes.